Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the Monday evening, November 26th edition of the Quincy City Council. We, on behalf of the body, hope that everybody enjoyed their, you know, and had a wonderful Thanksgiving. At this point, Madam Clerk, if you please could start by calling the role of the members.
Counselor King. Counselor Dubonah.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Hughes. Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
President Crowell.
Present.
Seven members.
Seven members, we have a quorum. And could you please read into the record the open meeting law?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
At this time, I would like to ask everybody to stand and join me in a moment of silence, keeping in our thoughts and prayers, those men and women who so courageously defend our country. At this point, I would like to call to the microphone, to the podium, past National Commander and Ward Two Resident Jake Comer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The two years uncovered. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jake. Madam Clerk, the first item on the agenda.
Tonight, we're honoring the Girl Scouts of Quincy.
Okay, at this point, I would like to invite to the podium Donna Yang from the Girl Scouts, who's going to basically give us an overview of the Bronze Award that we're going to be recognizing some of the ladies here this evening. Ms. Yang, welcome. We're happy you're here.
Good evening, everyone. And today, we're here to honor the Girl Scouts of Quincy. And the Bronze Award is the highest honor and recognition of community Girl Scout to can earn. The girls have achieved many skills and leadership through badge work and community service to coordinate with service projects that make a positive impact on the community. The project requires the girls first complete a journey and then requires a minimum of 20 hours for each girl. With those hours, they build their team, school, and community, choose and plan their projects, put their passion and spirit to work to educate and inspire others. This award was first optioned to the girls.
Thank you, Donna.
Just before we begin, I want to say, you know, congratulations to all you young ladies. Thank you for your commitment to the city, the dedication you've shown with all these projects, and the leadership you've shown, you know? Really, putting in the effort, the planning, and the follow-through. I get... Good? All right. Ah, I get good ideas all the time, and then I do nothing about them. They go right out of my head. You guys come up with good ideas, and then you execute it. That's the toughest part in life, is following through and finishing a project. So, kudos to you guys. We have some commendations, on behalf of the entire City Council, that we'd like to present to each of you tonight. I have the distinct honor of being the one who gets to mispronounce all of your names, so I apologize in advance. So first, we're going to start with Troop 75294 and the Bee the Change Project. And I'll just read a little description. So why don't the girls who did the Bee the Change Project come up? You guys know who you are. There you go. So these young ladies, Mr. President, teamed up to research pertinent information, plant pollinator gardens, and create videos to educate their peers on environmental changes, their effects on bees, and steps to help protect from these changes. So it's environmental theme there, right? Are you guys in order? Did they put you in... Oh, I was going to say, that would make it too easy. What's your name? Isabel. How do I pronounce that? Okay, first person we'd like to congratulate is Neem. Neem, come at... Who has these ones? Do you have these ones? We're all going to do a... I don't have... I have nothing for you. I'll give you a high five. She's got the hardware. Celia? And we'll do a round of applause after each project, okay? It's like the Oscars. Celia, congratulations. Is it Kara? Kara? Kira. Okay. Charlotte? And Maya? And Isabel? All right, what... Give me one of these things. So all of these commendations say, "From the Quincy City Council, presented to each member of the troop, in recognition of receiving the Girl Scouts of America, Bronze Award for the particular project." Encouraging, and, well, I guess they're all different, so... So let's give the group from Bee the Change Project a round of applause. Congratulations, young ladies. All right, go have a seat. We're going to come up and do a picture afterwards. Did you guys bring cookies to sell? Not yet? All right, well, you come back here, Will. Counselor Dubonah will buy 100 boxes from each one of you, he said. Okay, next, we'll be recognizing the young women from Troop 68282, who were part of the Butterfly Little Free Library, the Clifford Marshall Project. Come up, young ladies. You guys are like the bashful group, the shy group. Why is only two of you? Oh, I can see why you're shy. All right, Drew, we have Ella, Jenna, and Elizabeth. Jenna's not here, okay. Nina has these, so congratulations. This project... This project, the Butterfly Little Free Library at the Clifford Marshall. These young ladies built a Little Free Library at Clifford Marshall Elementary School, with the hope of inspiring and encouraging children to read by providing expanded access to books. So, great job, great project. Thank you very much. Congratulations. That wasn't so bad. Okay. Next, we're going to invite up the young ladies again from Troop 68282, who were part of the Little Free Library Snug Harbor Project. This is Gretchen, Kyrie, Alyssa, Catherine, Joyce, Elizabeth, and Tereen. Oh, good, because I probably mispronounced her name, so she didn't have to witness. Oh, I didn't? All right. Kudos from me. Okay, so this project, these young ladies formed a free library at the Snug Harbor Elementary School, again, with the goal of inspiring the love of reading and building the community and increasing access to books. So congratulations, young ladies. Thank you for this project. Gretchen, Kyrie, Alyssa, Catherine, Joyce, Elizabeth, and Tereen. Congratulations on the Bronze Award. Okay, and, one, two, next, we have, again, from Troop 68282, the Bronze Award recipients for the project Butterfly Garden at the Wallaston School Project. It's Madeline, Angelina, Maggie, Hannah, Victoria, Violet, and Zoe. Come on up. I like the name Violet especially. Nice, high five. Awesome name. Your names are okay, too, but, you know. These young women created a butterfly garden at the Wallaston Elementary School to support and stop the declining butterfly population by educating themselves on the use of pesticides in the ecosystem. Pesticide's bad, right? That was the gist. Pesticide's no bueno. Well, congratulations, ladies, on receiving the Bronze Award for your project. So Nina, I think it's your turn. You were going to do the Silver Award recipients here.
Before we do, Counselor, I'd like to invite Lindsay Corinsey, just to provide the chamber as well as the at-home viewer, sort of an overarching view of what the silver is. So, Lindsay.
Great. So the Silver Award is the second highest award a girl can earn in scouting, and represents a girl's accomplishments in scouting and in her community as she grows and works to improve her life and the lives of others. Just like the Bronze Award, cadets must first complete a cadet journey and create a take-action project that improves their neighborhood or local community. After girls complete the cadet journey, the suggested minimum time for earning their Girl Scout Silver Award is 50 hours for an individual girl or each girl on a small team. Girls earn the award by focusing on an issue they care about, building a team, exploring their community, picking, planning, and putting their take-action into project... into action, sorry. Demonstrating an understanding of sustainability in the wider world, and sharing what they have learned with others.
Thank you, Lindsay. Counselor Yang.
All right. So the Silver Award recipients that we're going to recognize first will be from Troop 85383 for the Summer Dance Project, Brianna Joyce. Want to come up? She's not here, okay. Well, we'll still recognize her, and we'll describe her project, we'll make sure she gets that. She had better stuff to do, like Counselor Hughes and Counselor Kane did, but, no, I'm just kidding. They both had prior commitments. Very reasonable laws. I'm going to get in trouble. All right, this is why I don't have an open mic. Yeah, right. Summer Dance Project that Brianna participated in and organized, she organized and provided free dance workshops at the library for underprivileged children, to allow them the chance to enjoy dance lessons they couldn't otherwise afford. That's a tremendous project. 50 hours she put into that, huh? Oh, that's wonderful. Okay, so the next Silver Award recipient, recipients that we're going to recognize, from Troop 85042, Isabella, Jada, and Angel, for the Clifford Nature Trail Project. Want you ladies, come on up. Yeah? Counselor Mahoney will hand out your commendations. Now, these three young ladies are all from former Clifford Marshall Elementary School students, and they worked with school faculty to transform the woods next to the school by cleaning up the overgrowth and creating a usable trail, as well as creating great appropriate worksheets for teachers to use when bringing their students through the trail. So we congratulate you on completion of that project and the Silver Award. Any poison ivy back there? You having any problems? Yeah? Oh, that's the worst. The next Silver Award recipients, from Troop 75054, Nora... Helping the next name here? Ms. Curran and Avon. How do you pronounce it?
Marade.
Marade, okay. And you're the only one here, the one name I couldn't pronounce. Yay me. All right, and what Marade, the project Marade participated in and completed was that she provided free ballet, tap, and hip-hop lessons, in an effort to celebrate, encourage, and educate others on the importance of physical activity through dance. Congratulations. It's a great project. And the next Silver Award recipients, from Troop 75054, Catherine, Kaylee, and Jarrell? Jarrell? Yeah? All right. Look at me. And these young women were awarded the Silver Award for their project, the Germantown Yacht Club Project, excuse me, in which they created a website, a slideshow, and a poster board for display at the Quincy Historical Society to preserve the history of the Germantown Yacht Club. Congratulations, ladies. The final Silver Award recipient, Sabrina Egan, from Troop 85042. She completed the What's Going On in Your Own Backyard Project, which extensively researched animals, how they live and are affected by deforestation and pollution. She conducted library presentations, created coloring pages, and crafts to educate children on the issue. Congratulations. I'm catching a drift here. Are you going to come up and tell us what the Gold Award is, or is that a thing? No? We're just going to roll with it? Okay, so the... No.
Gail. Hello, Gail. So Amy Chilcott earned the Gold Award this year. And I say "earned," it was identifying an issue in the community, and then she has to propose it, she has to get feedback, which a lot of the girls and some adults have a hard time hearing that their project doesn't go to work. And then she ran financial workshops at Quincy High, and Quincy High was pretty happy, so now they've integrated it into, I think it's one or two courses, so the students will learn about what is a credit card, what is a debit card, and other... The children had a lot of questions. She brought in AAA, who also talked about financing your college future. So I'm really proud of Amy. She's at Endicott College right now, so she can't be here. It was 80 hours that she did.
Excellent.
It's always more than 80 hours for the project, so I'll be happy to give that to Amy. She's from my troop.
Thank you, Gail.
So on behalf of all the City Councilors, we want to congratulate you all. Your dedication to the community and for your commitment to finishing those projects. It took a lot of time. It's not an easy thing to do, and you deserve all of our applause, so thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. And with that, Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
The honoring of Fred White, 2018-2019 American Legion State Commander.
Chair recognizes the Chairman of the City Council's Veterans Committee, Counselor Large Noel Dubonah. Say that quick, five times. Counselor, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, thank you all the Girl Scouts for coming out tonight. Such a lively room in here. Thank you. Just before we get into Fred White, you know, our 2018-2019 State Commander, American Legion Department of Massachusetts, I just want to recognize a couple of people that are in attendance tonight. Our past National Commander, Jake Comer's here tonight. Thank you for coming out. Come on up. City of Quincy Veteran Services Director, past Veterans Council of Quincy and past Marsete Post 294 Commander, George Nicholson. Past Quincy Veterans Council and Marsete Post 294 Commanders, Richard Keane, Robert LaFleur, and Robert Lewis. Can all three of you come up, please? Marsete Post 294 Commanders, Ralph Ames and William Cochran. Can you come on up, please? Tom. I'm trying. I'm looking at him, Tom Ames. Last but not least, American Legion Marsete Post 294 Member and SUNS, the American Legion Member as well, Guy Ferris. You know, I keep in very good contact with all the members that are up here tonight. You know, past National Commander Jake Comer, every few months, I'll get a call from him talking about different things and what the city's doing. I just want to thank you for letting me know about Fred White and the State Commander that had a nice dinner a couple weeks ago in Marlboro, Massachusetts. You know, I first met Fred in 2012, coming into the post, Marsete Post 294, and right on the spot, my brother-in-law was a past Commander of the post as well, and he, on the spot, with a group of you, made me sign up as a SUNS in 2012. You put the thing on the thing and said, "Okay, you're going to sign right now, and do you have a check for $25?" And I said, "Sure do," and I became a member. And Fred was right there, you know, helping veterans, helping others. You know, these fine men here have done a lot for other veterans, and they try to continue to do that in the community today, here in the city of Quincy, throughout the state of Massachusetts, as well as around the world. And I know Jake has been around for a long time. So I'm going to read this, Fred, and you can come on up and say a few words. Fred White, 2018-2019 State Commander, the American Legion Department of Massachusetts, in recognition of your tenure as 2018-2019 State Commander of the American Legion Department of Massachusetts, your commitment and dedication to serving the citizens of the United States, Massachusetts, and the city of Quincy as the former Commander of the Marsete Post 294 are truly admired. We thank you for your service and congratulate you on such an honorable achievement, and wish you continued success as you serve your term. This is signed by the City Council and the whole group that's up here tonight. Thank you, Fred, and come on up.
Counselor President Brad Crowell, Counselors Noel, past National Commander John, Jake It's a privilege to be up here, and I thank you all for recognizing what, not particularly what I do, but particularly what the American Legion does. The American Legion, largest wartime veterans organization in the world, does a lot for the good of the country, nation. And I thank you all, as I've said before, I'll say it again, it is a pleasure to be here and an honor, and I thank you for recognizing my service to this country.
We could just take a quick recess, and if we could take a little picture up front, if we could. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
That does conclude this evening's agenda.
Okay. Without the approval of previous meeting minutes, all those in favor? I oppose. The ayes have it. Communications and reports from the mayor and other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk.
I do have two traffics to put in tonight, to ordinance and advertising. In Ward Six, add a stop sign on Sharon Road eastbound, intersection, intersecting with Milton Road, and add a stop sign on Colby Road east and westbound, intersecting with Sharon Road.
Both will be referred to ordinance committee. With that, any unfinished business in preceding meetings? Seeing none. Reports of committees? Seeing none. Presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance? Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with a heavy heart that I have two memorials that I would like to submit to the council tonight, and two Quincy folks who passed away in the past couple of days, actually. The first was Cindy Manning, who many of us, if not all of us, knew very well. Cindy passed on Saturday peacefully at home. She was surrounded by her family. She was a little bit about Cindy. Trying to think of what's appropriate to say and not appropriate to say about Cindy, but Cindy was, she was born in Boston, raised and educated in South Boston, was a graduate of South Boston High School. She lived in Quincy for over 40 years. She worked for the city for over 30 years, working in the, most recently, in the City Clerk's Office as the Licensing Board Secretary for the past 22 years. Unfortunately, she had just retired from the city when she became, not too long after she became ill, and didn't quite get to enjoy her retirement, as I think her, her family, her husband Gene, and everyone else expected. She leaves behind a family that will miss her tremendously, including our very own Clerk of Committees, Jen Manning, who I know is very close with her mom. And I just ask that the council and folks watching at home keep Cindy Manning and her family in their thoughts and prayers as we mourn her passing. And unfortunately, another memorial that I'd offer tonight for young Lucian Teberge, who passed away last Friday. Luke was a senior at Quincy High School. He was a member of the National Honor Society. He was a good student. He was well-respected by faculty, administration, and the students of both Bernazani and Central Middle Schools. He was a member of the hyper robotics team, as well as the tennis team at Quincy High School. Luke was also a dedicated and accomplished member of Boy Scout Troop 42, excuse me, which is how I came to know Luke. In one of the biggest honors I get as a City Councilor is, on an annual basis, the Troop 42 invites me and a couple other councilors to speak about citizenship to the young men who are working on their citizenship badge. And that's how I first got to know Luke, you know, about 10 years ago, kind of watched him grow up and turn out to be this, you know, incredible, just amazing young man, 18 years old. He had earned, through the Boy Scouts, he had earned the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout, the National Outdoor Achievement, and the Venturing Ranger Award. He was somebody who, along with his dad, Ray, enjoyed nature and backpacking in the White Mountains. He and his father and his fellow scouts beside him were able to climb all 48 of the 4,000-foot mountains in the White Mountain National Forest. And I had some conversations with Luke and Ray about that, because I can appreciate what an amazing feat that really is. Having climbed one of them and then promptly given up the hope of ever climbing the other 47, I can appreciate just what a great example that is of Luke's character and the type of person that he was. He had a strong work ethic. He delivered newspapers, the Quincy Sun, for the past seven years. He also worked at Curry Hardware for about the last three years. And whenever I'd see him at Curry Hardware, he would always say, "Hello, Mr. Palmucci." I think every adult has this, you know, you have this spectrum of your life, and the first time somebody calls you Mister, like your last name, you feel like an old guy, because it's somebody younger who, like, means it, not like a joke, or like you're in trouble, like, "Oh, Mr. Palmucci." Luke was that person. Whenever I'd see him at Curry, he'd call me Mr. Palmucci, and I'd want to stop him, but I knew he was doing it as a sign of respect, because that's the kind of kid he was. He was incredibly polite, incredibly thoughtful. He had just recently started an internship at Dive Technologies in Quincy that he was very excited about. Unfortunately, his amazingly accomplished life at the age of 13 was tragically cut short by an auto accident. And really, I just, it's, we can only imagine the pain and the sorrow that his family must feel at this point in time, having lost their mom several years back to illness. I think it's important, I think we all can keep Ray, Luke's family that he leaves behind, Ray, his dad, Jonathan, his brother, and Cecilia, his sister. If we could keep them all in our thoughts and prayers. And I know Counselor Hughes couldn't be here tonight. She's out of state, I think unexpectedly, but she had called me this morning, because we both knew Luke and Ray and the family well, and she had called me and asked to make sure that I expressed her sympathies and her condolences. She's, she knew Luke very well as well, and it's really just, this is a tragic loss, not only for this family, which of course it is, but it really is for the entire community, for Quincy High School. for Quincy High School community and the community of Quincy because I have no doubt in my mind that Luke would have gone on to do amazing things with his life moving forward because he had done so many amazing things in the short time he was with us. In those 18 years, he had done so many amazing things and it really is a tragedy in his passing. So I ask that we keep, we keep that family in our thoughts and prayers tonight. Thank you, Counsel President Crowell.
Thank you, Counsel Palmucci. Counsel Harris.
Thank you, President Crowell. Also sadly, Quincy lost Caitlin Moore. She died November 19th, 2018, this just past couple of weeks, after facing a lifetime of health issues. She was the beloved daughter of Stephen Moore and Mary Cooney Moore of Quincy. She was cherished, was the cherished fiance of Stephen Harvey of Quincy, loving sister of Mary Moore Campbell and her husband Christopher of Quincy, and her twin sister Julia Williamson and her husband Robert of Wyndham, New Hampshire. Caitlin was a devoted aunt affectionately known as DeeDee of Joshua Moore, Jacob Campbell, McKenna Campbell, Declan Campbell, Emily Williamson, and Robert Williamson, cherished granddaughter of Priscilla McIntyre, of Randolph, and the late Thomas and Mary Cooney and Joseph Moore. Also survived by many aunts, uncles, cousins, and dear friends. Caitlin graduated from North Quincy High School, a class of 2003. Before her stroke, she attended school to become an EMT and was looking forward to excelling in her career. Caitlin enjoyed painting and making those around her laugh. Her main passion in life was spending time with her family, especially her nieces and nephews, whom were the center of her life. Caitlin will be remembered for big heart and her strong and forgiven personality. She will be sadly missed by all those who had the pleasure of knowing her. Relatives and friends are respectfully invited to attend a celebration of life which will be held tomorrow at Cohane Funeral Home at 785 Hancock Street at 8:15 a.m. in the morning and will be followed by a funeral mass at Sacred Heart Church. In lieu of flowers, donations in memory of Caitlin may be made to the Boston Children's Hospital, Heart Foundation, and that you can find at www.childerenhospital.org or And again, our hearts and prayers go out to the family, especially during this time of year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, tonight we had veterans, we had Girl Scouts, we're talking about Boy Scouts, we're talking about veterans, we're talking about people that served in the city of Quincy. Regretfully, Leo P. Cotterelli Senior, age 90, he was a lifelong Quincy resident, died unexpectedly on Saturday, November 17th of this year, 2018, at the VA Hospital in West Roxbury, surrounded by his loving family. Leo was born and raised in Quincy to the late Julio and Helen Fraser Cotterelli. He left Quincy High School at the age of 16 in 1944 to join the Merchant Marine Service during World War II. He served on three voyages to Europe and later his ship was diverted from a convoy to Russia to port in France in order to bring ammunition which was badly needed by U.S. troops during the Battle of the Bulge in 1944 to 1945. He enlisted in the U.S. Marine Corps in August of 1945 and participated in the occupation of China for 33 months where he assisted with the surrender of Japanese forces. Leo was employed as a sales manager in the Quincy office for the W.C. Caniff and Sons Monument Company for over 20 years. He was still working at the time of his passing. It was not uncommon for Leo to provide personal financial assistance to families of veterans by discounting his commissions. Previously, Leo served as the Director of Sales at Blue Hill Cemetery in Braintree for 33 years. As a younger man, he enjoyed golf and played softball and baseball for many years. Leo's lifelong passion was in helping veterans. For over 60 years, he was an advocate for veterans and their families. He was past State Commandant two times and Life Member of the Marine Corps League four times, past Commandant of the William R. Caddy Marine Corps Detachment 124 in Quincy. He was a member of the First and Sixth Marine Division Associations, the China-Burma-India Association, China-Marine Association, the VFW Bryan Post 613, the Marset Legion Post 294, and the Quincy DAV. He was a driving force in 1961 and 1962 to have the name of Treasure Island on Wallaston Beach changed to Private First Class William R. Caddy Memorial Park. Leo was well-known for organizing the first William R. Caddy Golf Classic in 1990, which still continues to provide funds to help needy veterans. He was also responsible for negotiating a 99-year lease at $1 per year for the permanent home of the Caddy Detachment in North Quincy. During his career, Leo marched with veterans in various parades, including the Quincy's Christmas Parade, and he was looking down on us the other day when we were doing that parade. He participated with the Toys for Tots program and assisted veterans at Brockton VA Hospital. Former husband of the late Teresa Brown Cotterelli and Patricia Scholar Cotterelli of Quincy. Devoted father of Peter Cotterelli and his wife Katrina of Dorchester, Dennis Cotterelli of Quincy, twins Michael Cotterelli and his wife Sam of Scottsdale, Arizona, and Mark Cotterelli of Dorchester, Scott DiMarco of Sommersworth, New Hampshire, Regina Cameron of Waymouth, Leo Cotterelli Jr. and his wife Edith of Fitchburg, Christopher Cotterelli of Stoughton, Andrew Cotterelli and his wife Maureen of Carver, Joseph Cotterelli and his fiancee Ali Salmani of Quincy, and the late Gerard Cotterelli and the late Pamela DiMarco. He also was a loving grandfather to 11 grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. If you could keep the Cotterelli family in your thoughts and prayers tonight, he is what I call a legend of Quincy. And this is an unbelievable obituary to be reading to all the folks and the picture of him back in the day when he was serving. But thank you so much, Mr. President.
Any other petitions, memorials, or remonstrance? Motions, orders, and resolutions? Scheduling of committee meetings? All right, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I'm actually going to recognize Counsel Yang, who's going to express some sentiment. One of our colleagues went through a major life event, so I will recognize Counsel Yang.
Thank you. This is actually in cahoots with Counsel Harris tonight. I appreciate the time and I appreciate, you know, being able to sort of bring this back into, you know, some moments of happiness that, you know, do cross our lives. And one of our colleagues had been, you know, going through a lot this year in his personal life and very recently on National Adoption Day had finalized...
Oh, me?
His adoption, yes.
I thought you were talking about Ian.
Yeah. You know, and again, this is sort of in cahoots with Counsel Harris, but we wanted to find a moment to sort of end tonight with something that's really exciting and really life-changing and it's not just, you know, the work you two do to inspire all of us every day, but obviously in your personal life you do amazing work and, you know, I know we all can't stand you most of the time, but we do also want to appreciate when you do something good. They're all serious. Congratulations. We're really proud and really happy for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, it's easy. He's awesome. Yeah, I feel like I won the lottery.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Motion to adjourn?
I was just going to say, we'll kind of turn it back over and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hit the wall when you start complimenting me at the end of the meeting.
No, no.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. City Council meeting concludes at 8:20. Have a good night, everyone.